Welcome to the Herndon Town Council, February 27th, Public Session.
Good evening. We're pleased to call the meeting to order and ask that you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did want to point out that we have a proclamation listed on our consent agenda this evening. It is for the recipient of the Herndon Rotary Club Citizen of the Year Award, and we'll be presenting that to the banquet held in her honor on March 7th. We have several sets of minutes up for approval, which I'll call for separate motions on. Is there a motion to approve the February 12th Special Work Session Minutes?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I have to abstain because I was out of the country.
All right. Thank you, sir. So noted. Is there a motion to approve the February 13th Public Hearing Minutes?
Second.
That was Sheila and Jen. Okay, so discussion on the motion.
Again, abstain. Canada.
We've got some slackers up here. Further discussion on the motion. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and two abstentions. Correct? Yes. Great. Thank you. And finally, is there a motion to approve the February 20th Work Session Minutes?
I can do that.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you very much. We do have one presentation this evening. We are pleased to present the proclamation to recognize Women's History Month, and I will recognize Councilmember Friedrichs to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing Women's History Month, March 2018. In 1981, the National Women's History Project, NWHP, an educational nonprofit organization that recognizes and celebrates the accomplishments of women, petitioned the United States Congress to declare National Women's History Week, which was celebrated for the next several years. Six weeks later, the NWHP successfully petitioned the Congress to expand the celebration of women's history to the month of March. From that point forward, March has been designated as Women's History Month, sorry, Women's History Month across the country, to recognize the countless recorded and unrecorded contributions that women from every race and ethnic background have made to grow and strengthen our nation. As the Town of Herndon celebrates Women's History Month, we remember that throughout history, women have demonstrated outstanding leadership in the areas of business, government, law, science, medicine, the arts, education, and many other fields, and have comprised a significant portion of the labor force, working both inside and outside of the home. Women have been instrumental during times of war, serving in our country's armed forces to defend the United States, and have taken an important role in serving our communities, particularly through volunteerism and in the establishment of charitable, philanthropical, and cultural institutions, including the Herndon Women's Club. Therefore, the mayor and town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Women's History Month in the Town of Herndon. Together with this year's theme, nevertheless, she persisted, honoring women who fight all forms of discrimination against women, to honor those who have shaped America's history and its future through their tireless commitment to ending discrimination against women and girls. Further, in celebration of Women's History Month, the mayor and town council of the Town of Herndon hereby recognize the Herndon Women's Club, who have greatly contributed to the betterment of the Herndon community since 1939, honor their dedicated volunteers, and highlight the important role they have played in Herndon's history. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to have read this proclamation honoring National Women's Month, recognizing the value women have always brought to their communities in the country. I'm keenly aware of all of this, partly because I sit on the dais with four other very accomplished women. I attended an all-women's college, which is pretty old-fashioned of me, where sisterhood was very highly prized, and am a member of several women's organizations, including Herndon Women's Club Sister Organization, the Herndon Fortnightly Club. The Fortnightly Club, as you know, was composed originally of a group of Herndon women who met every other week, and who raised the funds to build Herndon's first public library, now the Quaker Meeting House on Spring Street. When women support other women, great things happen. I urge you to spend this coming month learning as much as you can about the history of women in America, about the women in your family and your life, and to go, if you can, to the Lorton Workhouse Prisons Museum to learn more about what the suffragettes endured in 1917 to obtain the right to vote. It is a powerful reminder to us all that we must persist and work together if anything is to be achieved. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments from council? Mr. McKenna.
This day is pretty important in my family on my mother's side. First of all, I was born on March 8th, which is actually International Women's Day, so I have very kinship with women more than most. But the other thing, more importantly, my mother, her aunt, Nellie Potter, was part of the suffragette movement. In fact, her correspondence back and forth were kept at Douglas College, which up until 2007 was strictly a women's college, Rutgers University, which was completely separate, but it was folded in, but up until 2007 was a separate women's university as a public school. The other thing my mom would always remind me of was to always keep vigilant, you know, a woman's right to vote because you didn't get it until 1920. It was August 18th, and my mom would say, "We haven't had it for, you know, it hasn't even been 100 years since we've had the vote, so please, 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 always, always, always look after us." So, anyway, I just know how important it is in my family, and my family is directly involved in the movement, and it means a lot to me, so congratulations and keep pushing forward.
Thank you. Other comments? Vice Mayor.
Sure. Yeah, I want to tie into what Bill just said. I love that because certainly the voting piece of this is really important, and to think it's been, we're not even at the 100-year mark, right, and just how much progress we've made, certainly, but how much progress there is still yet to come in terms of continued equality, and there's lots of opportunities for firsts, right? If we look at around the country, we still have, half of the states have never had a woman governor or a woman senator, or, right, there's lots of opportunities. If you look at CEOs and opportunities in the business world and education and other places all around us where women still are not equally represented at the table. So I think it's always important to acknowledge this month and to celebrate, again, where we've come, celebrate that we're really lucky and fortunate to have an organization like the Women's Club in Herndon that does support so many great causes and great events throughout the town, throughout the year. I'm also a member of the PEO, which stands for the Philanthropic Educational Organization, and it's a women's organization that's focused on promoting educational opportunities for women around the world. And I also want to tie in, again, I love what Bill said because I'm also a member on the board of an organization called Service Never Sleeps, and what we focus on is allyship. And allyship is all about focusing from your point of privilege of where you can help. So women need strong men, right, from their point of privilege to also be defending us. We can't just be standing here saying, asking for equal rights and equal pay, et cetera. We need strong men doing that as well in allyship. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Olem.
Thank you. When I was growing up in North Alabama, one of the people we always studied in school was Helen Keller because that was where she was from. She was in our Alabama history, not just the national history, and we weren't necessarily talking about women back then. But this is a woman who was born and had childhood diseases, became deaf, dumb, and blind, and then another strong woman, Annie Sullivan, was the one that taught her and brought things to her life that she would have never had had her family just kept her in a room and taking care of her to make sure she was clean. Annie Sullivan made her work so that she became a very accomplished woman. And although I have two sons, I didn't have any daughters, and we lost their dad, I think I've raised them to respect women. And if they're not, I'll give you my number. But anyway, they're very respectful young men. They know, in fact, I'm usually doing things, they won't, I've always tried to get them to do things like scuba dive, and they look at me and say, "Are you crazy? There's sharks out there." And they're wrestlers and football players, but everybody has their own thing. But I'm so glad that we've done this, and I'm so glad your club is here because you do so many good things for the community here in Herndon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, followed by Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last year, I had the honor of reading this proclamation, and it's personal to me. I grew up in a single-parent home. My mother was widowed when I was seven years old. So as she entered the workforce at that time, which was the 50s, I heard about the difficulties that she experienced, the, just the situation that she ran into at work without getting into a lot of detail. So this is a proclamation that's near and dear to my heart, and that I'm happy to serve on a council that's dominated by women, and it's actually very comforting to me because that's how I grew up. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to be part of this proclamation.
We didn't even make him say that. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. Echoing the comments of my colleagues, on behalf of the Women's Commission at Fairfax County, the Town of Herndon, I'll be actually accepting the county's proclamation next week, celebrating Women's History Month. And I'm struggling with my remarks because there's kind of a lot to say about it. It's not that we just haven't done a great job of recognizing 50% of our population as equal partners in our success, and giving them the respect that 50% of success is due, 50% of safety. So, you know, when I think about why we need to celebrate these things is that it's really easy to forget or be dismissive of accomplishments, the claims, the fact that we have women of all ages coming forward in an atmosphere of sexual harassment is just one of those things that simply just does not need to exist ever. And when we have these proclamations and we call out the need for leadership, the need for equal treatment and respect, the need for equal opportunity, I think that I'm really proud to see our town and our organizations really step up to plate. So thank you, ladies.
I think everyone has spoken. I concur with my colleagues. I am honored to sit in this seat. I know that it has not been very long ago when it would have been very difficult for a woman to serve on a governing body, let alone sit in the middle seat, and I'm humbled and grateful every day. And I thank my colleagues for taking the time to recognize this proclamation this month, and we're thrilled to have the Women's Club here, and we can't wait to hear what you have to say. So with that, I would like to invite down the entire town council and manager and town attorney. We have Lisa Lambardozzi, who's the president of the Herndon Women's Club, and I understand, we think there are a lot of people here, but they have 80 members, they told me. So I'm so glad so many of you were able to make it out. We'd like to invite you for the presentation, and we'd love to hear from you.
That's good.
me that way. So everybody squeeze in.
Everybody smile.
I'll do the birdie.
Tammy.
I'm done.
Work it.
I got the smile out of that one.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So this one, so we can hear. So give me a second. It's on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
for recognizing us and for all the wonderful, kind words that you had to say tonight. It means a lot to each and every one of us, and I know that all of the women who are here tonight and the many others that weren't able to join us, they feel the same way. And we are all, we feel pretty passionate about our community, and we feel very passionate about the things that we are able to do here. And it just gives us great joy to live in a community where people are supportive of the things that we're trying to do and to appreciate it. So thank you so much for all that you're doing and for what you did for us, recognizing us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So that brings us to the comments portion. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Not a thing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Davidson.
Not this evening.
Okay. Mr. McKenna.
I have something. Well, first, I want to congratulate Egg Carney at the golf course. They recently opened up, and oh my goodness, it's delicious. You should go over there. Big fan of the Lagunita, which is their Filipino sausage, egg, and cheese. It's to die for. So get over there if you can. It's really good, and it's amazing place. Also, Nunu's Thai Dishes is opening on March 1st over in the Kmart Shopping Plaza. Very excited about that. I've known Nunu for as long as I've lived here, so he's from Thai Tada, and he's going over to the Kmart Plaza. So excited about that. The Herndon Youth Advisory Council meeting will be on March 14th, and the town manager has graciously said he would step in, so get ready. They ask good questions.
They do.
And I did want to bring up from the last work session, we had a, the Herndon Youth Advisory Council met with the police department last month, and some extraordinary things happened there. First, Priyanka Mani, one of our students, something happened at school, and she was frustrated by it, and she decided to bake brownies and babysit all weekend and donate $131 of her efforts towards the police to help them in regards to school issues. And Ian Nordling, who is a nonverbal autistic student, along with his cousin and communications partner Gina Conger, made a presentation in regards to how first responders can work with people who are nonverbal in regards to when they come to a situation. They may act in a certain way that maybe it's just different, and did an amazing job presenting that to the group. And the chief was so impressed that the following week, during roll call, had Ian speak to the officers in regards to those efforts. So again, I can't say this enough, we started back, our first meeting was back in December, and they wanted to see how, what government can do, and they're proving what government can do because they are the driving force behind it. So I'm just very excited to be part of it. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
That's pretty exciting. I was one of the people who donated to Priyanka's fundraiser, so I was really pleased and proud of her to see her taking action. And it's amazing to see kids all across the country take action. They are our future. We need to listen to them. But on a lighter note, I want to wish happy, holy to the folks who celebrate that starts this Thursday, March 1st. And if you haven't been over to Next Stop Theater, please take a minute to look at their spring schedule. Godspell opens up in a week, and it's going to be fabulous.
Thank you very much. Ms. Friedrichs.
I just wanted to add to the discussion of Godspell, which I'm really looking forward to. Art Space right now has an exhibit that is simply amazing. It's the fine arts photography competition, and it's probably the best one I've ever seen there, and that's saying something. So I urge you to go over. They are, the photographs are on display until March 31st. And I also wanted to echo what Councilmember Cunningham said about the youth advisory group. Right now, we're seeing, because of some very horrifying things in our society, young people rising up and saying what needs to be done, and I'm very proud of them. I think that Bill's, I don't want them to lose faith in our institutions, and I think that what Bill's doing is a small step in that direction, and I'm very grateful to him for doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Olem.
Thank you. I also attended Art Space for the photography contest this weekend, and it was gorgeous. I stayed until they announced the winners, and then quickly went over to find a space at Art, at the Ice House, because they had live music on. And to my delight, quite a few of the people that had been over at Art Space came over as well. So it's really nice when we have these things at Art Space, how the local restaurants do end up getting visitors from that. And most of the people were from out of town, because out of town meaning Herndon, not out of the area. They weren't necessarily from Canada, but we did have, we did have somebody from Ontario in the room, but actually, we did, and they didn't know you. So anyway, that was really good. But the week before that, it snowed, and thank goodness, DPW went out and took care of our streets. And so the Two-Ton Twig event, which was a bluegrass event, and the fiddle player teaches the orchestra, directs the orchestra at Herndon High. So I went, all the seats were filled, and there were a lot of young people there because her fans were there, and it was a four-piece bluegrass group, excellent music. And then people fanned out because the streets were clean. Thank you, DPW. And the other thing is, I see my friend Bessie up there, and we're going to go over and see Godspell on Saturday night. So I'm looking forward to that, and we'll give you a report in another week. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just one quick comment. Just a reminder, if folks don't know, that Herndon High School Band is going to participate in a major anniversary celebration in Normandy, France, on D-Day of 2019, right, so June of 2019. I, the reason I'm mentioning it is because I'm working with some of our band parents, mostly moms, but band parents, and Kathleen Jacoby, on organizing a group of adults who want to also go. So we'll sort of be a separate group, not, we'll kind of be with the kids, but we'll do something separate. So I'll tell you more about that, but just start to think about that. Put that on your calendars if that sounds of interest to you, in June of 2019.
Wow, did you say "we"? Are you planning to go?
Yeah.
Nice.
It's my birthday. D-Day is my birthday, so I feel like I should go.
Clearly, you should go.
I mean, it seems appropriate.
They're gonna need a lot of chaperones and a lot of help for that, so it's exciting.
But my group is not chaperoning. We're just going. So.
Let's be clear. The Vice Mayor has no responsibility over these teenagers.
We have no responsibility. I'm organizing the group that's just going. Let's just be clear. They're all set up here, people. With the chaperones.
That's exciting. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say, I just found out this afternoon that Northern Virginia Magazine, in their upcoming issue, has named Herndon as one of the up-and-coming neighborhoods in Northern Virginia, along with Mosaic and Pembroke Hills and a couple of other places. And they cited things going on in our downtown. They mentioned the art scene. They specifically mentioned Art Space, and Sheila is exactly right, the kinds of things when you have an arts, a vibrant arts community, and people come in from out of town and enjoy the arts and spend their money here, which creates additional tax base for us. So we really appreciate that. So that was really exciting. So take a look. It's been posted everywhere, all over online, but it's also in the upcoming issue of Northern Virginia Magazine. Super excited about that. And yesterday, I had the opportunity to participate with the Dulles Regional Chamber. They've started a new series called Metro Monday, and I believe it's the last Monday in every month is the plan, from 4:00 to 5:30. I think the location is, is it in the same location, or is TBD?
It will change.
Okay, so we'll announce where the next one will be. But it's about an hour and a half. Yesterday, the speakers were Rodney Lusk, who's from Fairfax County Economic Development Authority. He talked about what's going on in Tyson's and what's happening at the Herndon Station that's outside of the town. I spoke briefly about what's going on inside the town, and then Supervisor John Faust also spoke, and a couple of other community members. So it was really informative. The next meeting will focus on Innovation Station, which is the next station to the west of us. So if you're interested in what's happening with Metro, stay tuned to the Dulles Regional Chamber because they're holding a series of forums about that. And I believe, oh, I'm supposed to remind you about the Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Night. It's coming up in April, April 15th, on a Sunday afternoon, but the nominations are due by this Friday, March 2nd. And you can go to herndon-vah.gov for additional information. I encourage everybody to nominate a volunteer who's given time and service to the town, or an organization that benefits the town. That brings us to comments from the audience. This is the portion of the agenda where you can come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. When the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. So if you're here to speak about one of the public hearing items, including the budget, that will be at the next portion. So is there anyone that would like to come forward on any other item? Nope. Mr. Mitchell.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Stephen Mitchell. I live at 811 Elden Street, Herndon, Virginia 20170. I'm here tonight not out of desire by any means. I am here out of obligation as a citizen, in my opinion, in regards to what has gone on with the local government. It's been about a little over three months since I, hands down, was treated incorrectly by this town, and it's a shame. There's no news to anyone sitting up there, and it's heartbreaking, to be perfectly honest with you. I'm born and raised, I'm the fifth generation out of this town, and to even be standing here is nothing more than a shame. I sat here and listened to the Women's Club, you know. My grandmother turned 88 on February 1st. Best role model I've ever had in my life. First woman to be a switchboard operator for Bell South, which is now Verizon, I believe. And I have wonderful people that have guided my light in life, and they came from this town. And to see where things are going and to see what has actually transpired is, again, heartbreaking. On November 20th, I was heard by the HPRB about a roof that I had to have replaced, and I was recommended by staff for denial. I was recommended for denial by staff, and it was perplexing. That also was upsetting. My personal character was thrown on the line and stomped on by the board chair, which is appointed by this body here. And to be honest, I mean, I thought I would have heard from someone in the town. I thought I would have heard from the majority of you sitting up there. I do appreciate the time that I had with Mayor Merkel and with Councilmember Mr. McKenna. But the ball was dropped, and way before that, what happened was a complete joke. And these are by people that work for the town, and these are taxpayer dollars. And at the end of the day, it's hard for me to even stand here, to be perfectly honest. I apologize. I'm stumbling from my words. But when I was recommended for denial, I was shocked. I proactively went to the staff member and said, "Hey, listen, I know I'm not doing this in the right direction. However, I'm about to have a baby. Bringing life into my home. I got active leaks. I need to replace my roof. Am I on target?" I was told I was. I wanted to articulate that I did not mean to disrespect the board. However, I turned around and told I, the board is told I never reached out, anything of this nature. After having to spend countless hours of my own time to prove the staff wrong, to uncover their mistruths, it was very disheartening. The verbatim language was that.
Mr. Mitchell, can you try to wrap up?
Yes, ma'am. How much time do I have left?
That was three minutes.
That was three minutes already?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
I know. It goes by fast.
Oh, wow. Okay, well.
You can make your last thought if you'd like to, please.
Yeah, so the thought's simple. You know, I made sure there's no kids around here, and I'm gonna apologize for my language in advance, but I don't have any other words to really get this across. But based on how the town treated me, it was quite simple, plain and simple. What happened was unacceptable, and I guess the only response I have back is plain and simple, to fuck you too. And unfortunately, that's where I'm at. So.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
I can assure you that the manager and I- I can assure you that the manager and I have grave concerns about what occurred, and that the response has not been public because it is a personnel manner, matter that we're dealing with. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is Resolution 18G04, to solicit public comment for consideration during the development of the town manager's proposed 2019 budget. This item was continued from our public hearing on February 13th. Comments received by council on this item have been entered into the record. I'll open the public hearing and ask Mr. Town Manager if you do have additional comments on the budget.
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of council? This item, let me, let me clear up what we're doing here. This is the official way that the town council opens the budget process. It's not the only opportunity that one has to come forward on the budget, but it is, we advertise it through our legal means to make sure that the public is aware that we're officially opening the comment period. And so that's really the purpose of this. It was continued last week, just to have another opportunity to publicly say that. So are there additional comments or questions for the town manager? I guess questions is appropriate. Forgive me if I'm a little flustered. Questions for the town manager? Okay. So this is a public hearing, so I will call on comments from the audience. If there's anyone that would like to come forward and make any comments at this time on the budget, we are happy to hear them. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 18-G-04.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Olem, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Ms. Olem?
Yes, we look forward to hearing from the community on things that you're interested in keeping, or things that you don't think we should keep. And if you've seen the book, it's pretty heavy, but I'm sure you know just off the top of your head what you like in town. Personally, I love the big trash pickup twice a year. So things like that we could be considering. I know once upon a time, they tried to cut our, cut our budget by eliminating that, but that would have been such a little bit of money out of our budget that it would have caused a lot of grief to a lot of people. So I am one to say, I'm very glad we still do that. But please let us hear what your comments are.
And Vice Mayor?
Yes. So each member of council has, at this point, met with our finance team and our town manager. And I'm pleased to say we continue to run a really tight ship. Our leadership continues to look for opportunities to save and where we can be, where we can optimize things that we're doing. So I think you'll be happy once, once you can really look through those details. But as everyone said, of course, we want more input. We want to know if there are ways we should be reallocating anything or readjusting the way we're spending taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on the motion? Mr. McKenna, follow by Mr. Davidson?
Yeah, what Vice Mayor had said in regards to the, you know, meeting with the town manager and the financial staff, I just wanted to thank them for the process this year. I'm a big fan of process, especially when dealing with finances, because it's kind of important. So I can just say from, you know, just the experience from last year, which I was a rookie at this, to this year, I was very excited about the prospects, the understanding, and also the dialogue was very good. So I want to thank everyone for their efforts on this. I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to reiterate the request that citizens, even if you are a little bit leery of sending in communications to the town, or not wanting to sit and stand at the podium and talk about requests, please let us know what's on your mind, what your budget priorities are, and send your information in any way that you want, or stop one of the council members and talk to them directly. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any further comments? Oh, well, I concur with my colleagues. We are available. We're around. We want to hear from you in whatever way you're comfortable. And it doesn't have to be a very formal, fancy, well-thought-out essay. If you email us, just call us, or write us and say, hey, we think you should spend money on this, or not on this. So we're really anxious to hear from as many of you as possible. So with that, I will call the question, which, on the motion which was made by Councilmember Olem, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. Happy budget season, everybody. Next up is Ordinance 18006, to amend the fiscal year 2018 adopted budget to implement the town manager's recommended mid-year budget modifications. I'll open the public hearing, and our Director of Finance, Jenny Tripoli, is getting ready. We, if you're wondering why it's mid-year, I bet it's almost time for the next budget. We're a little behind in making these adjustments, but we're looking forward to hearing what adjustments need to be made.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As we do in the middle of each fiscal year, we amend the current year's budget for items that have come up that were either not planned or unknown, new grant revenues, for example, new grant expenditures, and the like. So without further ado, I will go through the list briefly. These have been organized by fund and also by funding source. So the first set of expenditures that we would like additional appropriations for are funded by grant revenues, to include police training, a position for community development that is funded by a federal block grant, and new revenues from the carnival. We are putting the carnival, of course, back into the 18 budget, since we weren't sure where it was going to be. It wasn't contemplated in the original budget, so we're putting it in now. So $175,000 for FY18 carnival revenues, which will, of course, be offset, offset by expenditures around that amount as well. For the general fund, expenditures funded by use of general fund unassigned fund balance. In finance, we're asking for an additional $200,000 for attorneys and financial advisors' fees for some one-time items. For information technology, this is the first half of the funding for the GIS project, which the Department of Public Works and Community Development are heavily reliant upon, in addition to $18,000 for replacing the Exela mobile citizen app for something that is more GIS reliant and a little more user-friendly. Under debt service, we have a small loan with VRA that we pay off in tiny chunks, and we'll be paying off until 2032. So we're asking to just go ahead and pay that off now. We will save the town some interest expense, because the interest rate of 2.93% is higher than our interest earnings. In our fund transfers, we need to move some money from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund and the Downtown Fund, specifically, I'm sorry, the Capital Projects Fund and then the Information Systems Fund, specifically to cover some items that have come up in relation to consulting for the downtown project, and also to cover expenditures in the Information Systems Capital Projects Fund. And then finally, in line with a policy set up in fiscal year 2012, we'd like to move another $200,000 into the revenue stabilization committed fund balance as per council's policy. Moving on to the Capital Projects Fund, we have expenditures that are funded by budget transfers. So this is a net zero bottom line. We'd like to move $70,000 in savings from the field improvements account over to the tennis courts account to address some critical maintenance issues. And in public works, we'd like to transfer $80,000 from the town shop improvements account to major building maintenance, just to keep everything together, and to address the HVAC unit needs for 1481 Sterling Road. Again, expenditures funded by transfers from the general fund, that is the $130,000 for the downtown consulting and contingency expenditures that were mentioned earlier. And then we have some expenditures granted, funded by new grant revenues, $276,000 for the WNOD Trail Lighting Project. So that expenditure will be offset by grant revenues. And then finally, use of assigned fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund. This is actually a correction to the first budget amendment that we did. There was a timing issue with something in the system, so the number that was put in in the first of the year was a little bit too low. So we're just correcting that. And then for the Information Systems Improvement Fund, we're just appropriating the revenue, which is the transfer from the general fund to fund already appropriated Information Systems improvements. In the Water and Sewer Fund, expenses funded by budget transfers, we are asking to move $260,000 in savings from sewer service costs over to vehicles to purchase a small jetter truck, which will allow us to flush sewer lines in smaller areas, rather than trying to get the bigger truck where it just won't fit. And finally, for the Downtown Parking Fund, we are asking to fund expenses of $95,000 from unrestricted net position to cover some engineering and surveying expenses also related to the downtown garage project. Overall, the fiscal impact to the general fund, we watch the general fund balance, the unassigned fund balance closely. It is a benchmark of financial health. It's also something that ratings agencies look at. And when it's all said and done with this request, we're asking for a little north of $1 million of general fund unassigned fund balance, which will reduce that fund balance, but will keep us at about the 22% level. So still very healthy. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for all that detail. Do we have questions for Ms. Tripoli? Ms. Friedrichs?
So I asked about 43,000 questions when we had our work session, and I actually, I just wanted to thank you for doing an extremely good job of presenting it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other questions or? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing, so I will call for comments from the audience. If anyone would like to come forward and make comments on this budget amendment, we would welcome you forward. Same as before, you have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Mr. Davidson?
Madam Mayor, I move the budget amendment, which is Ordinance 18-0-06.
Good second. Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Davidson, seconded by Councilmember Cunningham. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Davidson?
Yes, I'd just like to make a quick comment, that I'm delighted to see the festival carnival back in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Ms. Cunningham, anybody else? Ms. Olem?
I just wanted to say, you, you were very thorough in the work session, and thank you also.
Thank you. Any other comments? No, I appreciate it. And this is what we do. We move money around and make sure we cover our expenses. So I appreciate the work on behalf of the staff. This does require a roll call vote, so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olem?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes. That motion carries. Next up is Ordinance 18007. Is that the one you're showing me? No? Okay. All right. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Next up is Ordinance 18007, to grant a second franchise amendment to Cavalier Telephone LLC for a route extension. And I will reckon, I'll open the public hearing and recognize Tammy Chastain for the staff report.
All right. Good evening. This is the Second Amendment for Cavalier Telephone, which extends their route an additional 400 feet from, sorry.
Hey, Tammy, would you please turn your microphone on?
You can.
Thank you.
The Second Amendment for Cavalier Telephone, that extends their route 400 feet from 470 to 475 Spring Park Place, with about 50 feet of that and town right away.
Uh-oh. I know, it's not a keyboard, so things are going the right direction.
Out of the way of the camera. I'm going to stand here.
This might, oh, my phone.
I can go again. Want me to go again? Yes. Okay.
It was so long. I don't know if we can sit through it again, but we'll try.
So Second Amendment for Cavalier Telephone, 400 feet extension to their existing 16,526.4 feet conduit, and it's going from 470 to 475 Spring Park Place. So, anything else?
Okay, we got it that time.
All right, good.
Any questions for Ms. Chastain?
Mr. Richardson is also here, in case you do have any questions.
Yes, so I am to announce that the town has received one bid from Cavalier Telephone, and have we received additional bids?
No, we have the one from Cavalier.
What? I'm shocked. Okay, so since there are no other additional bids, I will close the bidding process, but the applicant or applicant's agent is here. And if you would like to come forward and address the council on, on this, you may, or if you're feeling good? All right. Works for me. Okay, well, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. So I will call on comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? You guys are so easy tonight. Okay, so seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, oh.
It's one of Armistice.
Madam Mayor, I move 18-0-06, 07.
I'll second that.
All right. Discussion on the motion. Anyone? No? Ms. Olem? No?
Good job. Thank you very much. I'm glad the speaker came on.
Just want to thank the gentleman from Cavalier to stop by. Really appreciate your involvement. It means a lot that when an applicant comes, and at least to me, because it shows that there's, you care. That really matters.
For better? Oh, really?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Further discussion on the motion. Well, for better or for worse, it was interesting. I'm glad you were here this evening. Is, if there's no further discussion, I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. We do have two items on the consent agenda, which I understand, Councilmember Cunningham, you're going to abstain from, from the Resolution 18G08. Okay, so I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is that Ms. Olem? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? And that motion carries with one abstention, and?
Madam Mayor, seeing no further business, I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? And that motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:46 PM. Thank you all for being here.